All right, thank you. Let's bring the City Council meeting for August 23rd to have a 20 feet of order. Please rise.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I'd like to note for the record that Mayor McCullough is not in attendance tonight. Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLehman.
Here.
First Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
We have two agenda item modifications. Councilmember Evans asked for full AB 22-122 from tonight's full council issues. That will be further reviewed.
121.
121, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion? Can I move?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next one is Councilmember McLehman has asked that AB 22-41, ordinance B22-41, be moved from consent agenda to full council issues as items C. Can I move?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moved. And goes on to no announcements, appointments, or presentations. There's no public hearings, so we'll go on to citizen comments. This is your time to address the council and city business. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Director. Council Mayor Dan Decker, two-horned, and the city's Bonnie Lake, our past council member. I read an email sent by an elected official that said something like, "I did this proclamation on about, like, 12, 2022 grant money for doing this." Then this elected official said something like, to the news Tribune, that the proclamation was only confirming what the last elected official proclaimed. I would like this misinformation fiasco cleared up. Where is the truth about this proclamation? Was it done just because for the last elected official gave us a proclamation? Or is it because there's grant that can be processed because of it? I don't believe that there's a grant available for that type of situation. So I have to, in my heart, laugh. New subject. Inflation Reduction Act. Now that I laughed out loud. What tax hikes are in this bill? Here are some inflation hikes in the bill. $739 billion added to the $30 trillion we already get to have to pay down by our federal government. 15% are greater tax hike on corporations that will bleed down to the people at about 20% increase in cost to buy something. Yeah, well, those Inflation Reduction Act is nothing more than a fiasco joke. And I'm hoping that City Council realizes that and realizes that whenever you bring a tax forward, it only does one thing. It raises the cost. Raises the cost of living, the cost of anything and everything that you might want. And our wonderful, well, somebody's wonderful governor, I call him Pinocchio Joe, said at the White House last week, "My message is this to Congress. This is the strongest bill you can pass." He wasn't making a statement, he was asking a question. What he's telling them is, "Come on, boys and girls, you can do better than that. You can make the inflation rate go up even higher. Work harder, work harder. Put more inflation into inflation we already..." That's what he was saying. If you don't want inflation, council, it's simple as pie. You know that apple pie your mom made? I remember what my mom used to make. Passed. They were good. Point here is simple. Stop spending money when you spend money outrageously like our council, no, excuse me, not you, but our federal council, legislature, and the House have done. It only creates inflation. $9 trillion in the last eight months. What's wrong with that? Oh, it created more inflation than we ever had in 40 years. That's what's wrong with it. That's going to continue. The government, federal government, does not want the natural gas line going from Canada down to California because they want to cripple the natural gas prices. They want it to go inflation, up, up, up. And our governor, or your governor, somebody's governor, I should know, he's not mine. He's in cahoots with the other three governors, Oregon and California, to stop this from happening. Oh, I was reading yesterday, ready for this? You want to stop the methane? Go to Kingston, out into the ocean. Plug up those 4,000 holes that methane is bubbling up out of. Oh, you can also go to Alki Point and do the same thing. And there's like 18 other spots in our Puget Sound that is doing that. Methane is bubbling up out of the crust of the world's ground. And it's just, there's nothing but bubbling methane. And the methane... Oh, why would we want to stop methane? Oh, because it polluting air we're breathing? Oh, and our government also, by the way. There's this guy that invented a sale.
Swatman.
That invented a sale that would run on water. Well, now the government has invented it. Well, it happened 20 years ago. I guess my time's up. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for the good of your order?
Ryan Sealy, our department commissioner. I'd like to just let you know what we discussed last week. We had four entries. And we reviewed them all in depth. And one was about butterflies, one was about a preserved, one was called Lager's Lounge, and the one that we felt most incorporated the Bonnie Lake was Moss Woods. They gave a description about how this area has developed and using the woods around us has been able to build, you know, homes, schools, buildings that have created Bonnie Lake. And then it also referenced, you know, the moss that's always here because we have that temperature that keeps coming. And so, you know, as moss grows, you know, so does Bonnie Lake. So our recommendation was Moss Woods. Although, we would like to just let you know that within Moss Woods, we'd like to possibly use those other three, you know, Lager's Lounge maybe as a small park for kids, you know, depending on what the place structure would be. The Butterfly Sanctuary, and then a Preserve that maybe certain parts of it, as it possibly gets developed, you know, make sure that is, you know, kept as a wooded area and preserved as a natural state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Sealy.
Anyone else for the good of your order? Okay. Seeing done, we'll move on. There's no correspondence. We'll move on to committee reports. Finance committee, my committee. We met this evening at 5:00 PM. We have personnel update. There's Rush Shab, Assistant Planner, that is moving from the East Coast to the West Coast. And so he had to adjust his starting date to September 16th. But we're excited to get him here. Got conditional offers out for important after-school. Program Site Director. And the other big thing is Aliang, mechanic two, has actually put in a retirement date for the 15th of September. And the grant is sure we will be able to fill that position. Business action items. We took up the using ARPA funds for the chiller at the police department. That bit is finally come through. It's going to be some time to actually get it in and done. But I should actually be able to look forward to it, move it in there. Can be able, I believe, less expensive than other things. And that is unconcisen. We approved our meeting minutes and adjournment. That's all we have. So on to CC.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We did have a community development committee meeting, August 16th, 5:00 PM. Public is always welcome back there. We did the public works center, community project update out there. They're getting pretty close to actually moving in. They might be moving in some of the stuff here and there. Elevator certification. They were doing some testing on the generator and all that kind of stuff. But it's really almost in its final stages, have to get it signed up, you know, and toss the keys over to us. Have had it moved into that, pretty darn soon. Allen York, ball field update. I don't know who's, like, driven pastor, highly recommended it. You know, they've done a bunch of work that you can see now. Lights kind of standing up and everything. Looks pretty interesting. Looks like it'll be coming along just fine. There is some overages, of course, associated with, you know, the undergrounding work that they were finding, the Berry Oil Tank and some of the bottom layer that they ran across out there. So they'll get pretty close to their budget. Slightly over that on that one, not too much. They'll come back, of course, for that. We, you know, originally, recall, trimmed them down real tight on their overage allocation. Usually they use 10%, 5% on that project. They'll come back to us probably with some stuff on that one. Also, resolution for professional services agreement for our lovely ABD gas permit that Andrew Potter runs for us. E, that's that non-pollute discharge elimination. Your runoff water situation that state mandates us to have regulations around. We recommended that one to be moved forward for approval. Action item also included Resolution 3071, which is solid waste, hazardous waste management plan, which we just basically plug into the counties. You know, we always ask them why we have to do that. And otherwise, we have to find our own disposable disposal site, right? Be almost incredibly hard to do because Pierce County, basically, in waste management, those folks own their waste management site out there. So we just could not go with the Pierce County plan. A bit of our minutes. We were chatting with the code enforcement folks. They came along up there. It's nice to get, see what they're doing with different activities, whether it's fencing or, you know, property out there that's being burdened some. As mentioned, this council's well aware that, you know, there isn't a lot of funding available for some of those leases properties. So it's kind of like those long-term action items that just take forever sometimes. They won't work with the code enforcement issues. But those are our items of business that you can...
All right. Thank you, Councilor. Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Public Safety Committee will be held on the 13th of September, 3:30 PM, on the second-floor conference room. Public is welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Evans. All right. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. There are motion to adopt. Can I move?
Seconded.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a pass. That moves us to full council issues. First council issue, Madam Clerk, would you please read that?
This is ordinance B22-39. The council motion would be to enact a business and occupation act, adding new chapters to the Bonnie Lake municipal code and providing for referendum process.
Can I move?
Seconded.
Discussion? Councilmember McLehman.
Yeah, so I, after listening to the discussion on the BNO tax, I have to ask the obligatory question. We scrap all park projects for the future unless there's some other revenue sources. I think someone hasn't thought of yet. But, I mean, ultimately, this passes and the item below it passes, that allocates that 80% for park funding, which we can bond against, which is about $16 million towards the 50 and with the comp plan that we're redoing, it's going to show what the need is and probably increase cost over the next 30 years of what we will need as a growing community. So ideally, that's what the intent of this is, to fund that. I don't know of any other sources that could generate this kind of revenue that we can bond against, a continual revenue stream that we can bond against that allow us to kind of get a decent foothold in future projects for parks. If there is, I'd love to explore that in addition to not in lieu of, because we will need to continue this throughout, you know, the rest of the growth of our city until we max out and have some sort of maintenance revenue stream as well for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mayor, I'll talk about some businesses, they were considering about their extra charges for business, this extra tax on there. Some of this is really going to have to pan out, but except for thousands. But I pushed for 10 years to get a park into town. Us as a council, I talked about numerous times over the past 10 years, not before my time, about doing something else. Allen York Park, as you all know, is a real challenge for us, if everyone went on there. We don't pass this tonight, and as Deputy Mayor Evans said, we've got nothing going in the future for it. We've got a park division that's been working hard for many years trying to get us to help develop something in our city. As I told you before, we have nothing for children, young children. We have nothing for young families to take their kids out and go play someplace. We have nothing for seniors of my age who have to do something at the park. Allen York Park is very dangerous at night for any kids. I've gone to numerous meetings of the school district to talk to kids, and they say Allen York Park is a dangerous place down there. That's five, six-year-olds going down there about the drugs involved, even though our police does phenomenal job of controlling it down there. This town park is an optional physical location for us to include from outside our city to come visit Bonnie Lake. As I mentioned before, people to Holly can come shopping in Bonnie Lake and it is worth the park today. We have ball teams that, as we have a wonderful softball team this year, that they made great progress. They make more fields up there for them, so they can return us to Bonnie Lake in the future. I realize that Mr. Evans brought forward to us that a bishop's house is $53 billion is what we really want to do, which is a long ways in the future, many years to go from there. What are you going to do? If we have many ball teams come to Bonnie Lake, we might even get a hotel you talked about. They need someone to support them in the off-season. I've talked to two people about hotels. They both say, "You don't have any business here, Tom," that they're going to... Normally, you have execs coming to their big business, they spend time, they use the hotel. In the summer, you have activities going on, such as ball. If we had in the winter, you've got no place around us, people going to Crystal Mountain. But we had a hotel. All those work together. And we're not making that work. We don't have more Clarion, bring these people to Bonnie Lake, more things they can do in Bonnie Lake. I know that the dollar is here is a challenge for us, and I've got to wishy-washy back and forth, as, you know, talk about what are we going to do? I mean, we don't do it, we don't put it to the public and ask them. I really did go directly to the citizens of Bonnie Lake to make them pay for this, where it's, in my mind, easier for a large business with the high volumes out there to do their part to help us, give parks, give them more people. I mean, it's just, it's a win-win for everyone. And they're talking in the past about peace poles and stuff. Get different businesses in town, help do some peace poles. They'll give some donations, that type of stuff. Their employees are involved. I mean, I want a park that's going to have involved from all of our citizens. I don't want to go build a park, the playground, and feel, okay, have fun. I want them to be part of the group there. I want them to have their name on something. You've got a Walmart pole, you've got Fred Meyer's pole here, our player and stuff. There's so many things we've been doing, but I've seen the path for the cities. And I realized this tax we're talking about here is a hard, not for us to take on and not challenge the business. As a council, you say no this time, and you tell me what you're going to do next year after, or in five years from now. Some of you have young children that want to go play someplace, but they're going to go down to Allen York Park and play on the off-season, in the summer down there. So I really think, I'd like you to rethink about what you all want to decide tonight for this, because this is our fun. It would be five, 10 years ago, we made a plan for all this, and it's fallen away someplace. And $23,000,000, and have that plan go together. You want to do that again in a few years? So 10 years from now, we're going to be... It takes a long time to do all this stuff. And somebody, we need somebody to help pay for our new ball field in Allen York Park. We have one person that does all the work right now for us. We can't afford to pay for anyone else right now. You know our budget's going for it. That's going to be a real challenge for us, too. And we just need to find a way to help finance this for now. If we find that things are changing, always stop us to go forward, do a tax within our citizens to help pay for more future growth. This will have one indefinitely, someplace to start. And that, when you're telling the citizens, "You care about downs, you care about Bonnie Lake," and I told you also about the trail, the Pecan Creek Trail. Look at all the people on Facebook that saw that, posting it for Pecan Creek Trail. This is great. I love it. And that day I went down there, I probably passed over a dozen people walking their kids, their dogs, their strollers, running, guy who was exercising, running down the trail there. That's one little thing. We need to do that in Bonnie Lake. Go to Hall, you've got parks all over the place. People love to go out there, use those different trails out there. You don't have that in Bonnie Lake. Need to have a, we need for people move down in the Bonnie Lake, that's a beautiful place to be, but things I can do on the weekends, things I can do with my kids, pay that, all the people, too. So this is, I really hope you reconsider your thoughts tonight about doing this and where we are going from here. And then, as we go on, look at it again and bring it back forward next year to see where we are. We need to start someplace.
Thank you. Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, I'm kind of still at a standstill with this. I have heard it said, so I can't quote it from myself, but you literally cannot tax businesses into prosperity. We need our businesses to want to come here so that they can be prosperous and create a legacy for their families, small businesses. A million dollars is really in gross sales. That's actually quite easy for a small business to do. So they could very well end up being affected by this $1 million. That is way too low, in my opinion. That doesn't benefit a small business. Maybe $10 million, or I could look at something like that for the bigger businesses. But and then, as Councilmember Watson said, you know, well, we're just asking the businesses to, you know, help pay for this. Well, in actuality, if the businesses are paying for this, then the citizens are paying for it, because we're going to pay in higher taxes, we're going to pay in higher product. The prices of the products are going to have to go up in order for the businesses to be able to pay that 2% tax, which actually is quite a bit.
Two tenths of one percent.
Two tenths of a tax of 1%. But that's still a lot of money for any, any business to have to pay. And like I said, in the long run, it is the citizens that we're asking to pay for this. I'm just, I'm really, I'm struggling. I understand that we want parks and we need parks, but I have not given up hope that there's a possibility of having a private-public partnership. There are hundreds of companies out there that will finance a park and put their name on it, and they've done it all over Kirkland and different parts of Bellevue. And I just have a really hard time believing that if we don't start, if we can't entice businesses to want to come and help us build a park for our community, because we need one for our kids, then we're not doing our job, making Bonnie Lake a place that businesses would want to come and support us. And I don't think that a business tax, if somebody wants to open up a small business and they say, "Oh, well, Bonnie Lake has a BNO tax, but Sumner doesn't, so let's open up in Sumner," because, you know, who's to say that, you know, four years from now, when we break that $1 million marker, that's going to put us in a whole nother tax bracket. And our taxes are going to be higher than what we expected them to pay. And I heard that from Councilmember Swatman, I believe it was quoting him on that. But anyway, I'm, unfortunately, I'm a no on this, but I, I understand. But at the same time, I just don't feel that at this time, with inflation and with all of the people struggling to make ends meet, this is not the time to raise taxes on business. No matter how small of a percentage it is, this is just not a good time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fullerton. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you so much. I do want to bring up that we were put in office by people, not businesses. With that being said, the taxes that are being raised, all of these businesses are multi-billionaire, conglomerate businesses. They operate in every city and every state that has a BNO tax. This is a line item on their budget. This is not impactful to a Walmart or a Costco or a Target or, you know, you say $10 million. The shoe store in town only does $3 million. So we would be excluding a multi-level, multi-million, multi-billion dollar shoe store because it didn't meet your $10 million threshold. However, it is not considered a small business by any means. We have to think about the people that we represent, not the businesses that represent us, the people that we represent. We represent the 21,500 people that live here in the city of Bonnie Lake. The tax that's going to be raised from these businesses is also going to be paid for by Tahale, by Fugly, by Sumner, by everyone that shops here. If we do a bond and the city of Bonnie Lake passes that bond, 100% of all of our citizens are going to take that impact. Right now, we're talking just a fraction of that that's going to take this impact because it's going to be spread out by so many over Pierce County. If we don't pass this, then I'm going to make a motion that we dissolve the Parks Commission because that's irrelevant at this point. If we have no funding for any future growth, I mean, we have $1 million at the end of this year in parks. We're going to raise $900,000 over the next biennium into that. That's 100 years of savings without any park projects before we can even think about tackling the current projects we have. So I'm all for, and the $1 million is a pretty significant amount. I don't know many small businesses that I would, not through what the Department of Commerce calls a small business, but I think what we would say is a small business. A mom and pop shop in Sumner or Bonnie Lake, those shops aren't doing $1 million. And we're talking $200 for every $100,000 beyond that. So, you know, I know Connie at CJ's isn't doing $1 million. I know they're not probably doing $1 million over at Glow Martini. I know the foe place is not doing $1 million. These local businesses are not anywhere near that threshold. So I'm not too concerned that the impact from this is going to be felt by, by the people that we're really trying to protect with this $1 million threshold. So I hope we can pass this. I hope we can actually move forward with the city and doing parks. If it doesn't pass... If it doesn't pass, I imagine we should just dissolve and take everything out of our comprehensive plan for parks because at that point, we really don't care about it. We care about businesses more than the people we represent. And the people are the ones that put us here. So let's make sure we're thinking about them when we take this vote.
Councilmember Evans, Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Councilmember Evans. I, yeah, really appreciate all the information that you've been providing to help us funds, you know, something we've been talking about. I think I do agree with Councilwoman Ford that the $1 million threshold, it does make me, I'm not a fan of it. I still feel like gross receipts of 1 million is, is low. I'm not saying 10 million. I'm not proposing something as high as that, but I just, I don't want anybody to get caught in the net that doesn't belong there. So I think also the question I have then is, you know, if you're right, it was the, the vote of the people, you know, pressed to make decisions for them. But I do feel that this, this kind of thing does get passed on to citizens. And so I guess my question would then be, is there a potential for us to put something like this on the ballot where they choose to tax the businesses? You know, not necessarily taxing the populace. And I don't know if that's a possibility. If that were to be added to a ballot where they would, they would decide whether we would. I don't know if that's a possibility. Instead of it being where they vote to tax the populace. But I don't know.
They can just tax themselves up when they have to go to next.
Is that the only option?
I think what you're asking is like a potential advisory vote. I don't, it wouldn't necessarily be binding. And I'm not an expert on elections and, and the binding part of things. But I think it's what we did a few years ago with the marijuana thing was we, we took that to the people and asked them, would you want us to approve a marijuana shop? And regardless of the outcome, it, it wasn't a binding outcome. So that may be something, I don't know if we have any legal here that might be able to represent us on that or answer that, or it might be a question for another, another person meeting.
Because I think that in the ways in which we've talked about it, you know, like you, we've discussed in great detail, you know, the, the little amount that, you know, would come out as far as the amount from a business.
Yeah.
And then also just what types of businesses that would fall under. And so that's all great. I, I think that it's also when, and I'm going to quote you again, I'm sorry. Not verbatim, but Councilmember, Councilmember Swatman had said too, that, you know, this, and that's why I agree with you, but just in the way this does look to the public, you know, they're like, hey, we don't have money for something, so we're going to go ahead and just tax you all. Like that's, that's, that's how it feels. And I know that we have picked this apart and it, and it does look decent. But I also think that once you say yes to something and you implement something of this degree, it's harder to undo if things start to get a little wonky later, you know? You know, and so I don't know. Those are the things that concern me. I'm not even against it, but I just don't know that it sends the right mess.
Councilmember Watson.
In reference to the businesses and raising prices on it, as a ass retail, large retail box store manager over the years, I mean, that never would affect what we do in the store, would affect Walmart, would affect Fred Meyer's. And as I mentioned once before, we were sitting in the discussion of this, places like Ben Franklin, they were here that night, that's the reason I made that comment here. Because people would bring their kids to the city and complete the park and go buy some toys or something. And Ben Franklin would fix some hobbies home. They might go play in the park, go to, then he used to go for lunch. I mean, look at the big picture is what brings people into your town? That's what you want to think about. That parks at Tahole, there's no real business out there for them. So if they want to, monkeys have a school, let's go to something is where you want to go. Let's go to the park, Bonny Lake, and then they gave us dinner somewhere. So I think the benefit, it's really hard to find that benefit that is constant more. Those dollars from a large business, they're not going to change their retail sales. We never did that as a retail store manager. I worked for two different companies and stuff. That doesn't affect you. The only concern about selling things essentially have to control your property or store. And that's all. So I don't see them changing how they're operating. It might affect a smaller business coming to Bonny Lake. They may want to go to Sumner when they decide to. But if, if they're retail looking how they can grow their growth this, they're looking at the growth in the city population, which for me, Sumner hands down, our growth here. The future growth is good for them. So as a retail person looking for new places with their business, Bonny Lake looks better than maybe Sumner is kind of their location. And what, because of all the potentials here with warehouses, how employees get for them and for places for their employees to go do things. I'll wrap one more thing and that's Teeter out there. Teeter began to violate because his employees, he has something, someplace to do things. He had the space to build a location out there for their exercise equipment. And because they didn't have both, a lot of things for them to do, they built a facility inside their building for their employees to exercise, play basketball, play Go Bullin', those type of things in their building there. So that's what they did up here. And that's what we need to do more for more people in our city. Who knows? We might get a recreation facility built by somebody for kids playing. They're always asking for someplace to go, like, you know, kids after hours place to have fun and stuff. So we need to have something for to drop more kids to our towns, more family to our towns, future growth of those young adults and stuff too. And I think all those hand in hand.
Councilmember Ford.
I just wanted to confirm that Councilmember Evans is correct. It is considered an adversary vote for the taxes and it's not one of the others.
Thank you. If I, one, one more thing, just, just to kind of capture these small businesses. The average sale per subway annually is $422,000. That, these subways wouldn't even be on, on that. So if you're thinking of other businesses that are in that kind of footprint, that kind of sales, that kind of marketing business, that would even be excluded. So, you know, I don't know if you guys have talked to actual business owners of what their annual sales are, but a million dollars is pretty difficult to get to, even when you're a franchise subway or anything in a strip mall is going to be almost exclusively excluded. Just based on, you know, if any of that might not be. I only say that because work footage, hours. Sorry. Okay. So it's, it, it's just, you know, the, the shoe store that does $3 million a year, the first million is going to be excluded, right? Million two and million three are going to be $2,000. So a giant multimillionaire shoe store conglomerate is going to have to pay $4,000 to the, in the city tax. So, and that, that might be something to a small business, but to them, that's, that's, I think relatively reasonable. And if you think about, you know, I don't know how many restaurants, maybe, maybe the, the Mexican restaurant out on town might, might exceed that because of their square footage, their hours, their catering, Muslim. But it's $200 for every 100,000 beyond that. So $2,000 for every million earned beyond $1 million. So that's 175 bucks a month. Basically, that breaks down to.
Yeah, I, thank you. That, that, I, yeah, that's great. I think if we're looking long-term, and I think that's where it's, where I think the risks always happen, is it's longer term down the road. There's a new set of council here, right? They see that there's been a BNO tax in place. And then for some reason, they're wanting some more money or they want to raise it higher. You know, it would be easier for them to do that if they wanted, or would they have to totally tear down?
This is the max cap.
Okay.
Allowed by state.
Okay. And if there, is there a way for them to try to recycle something like this? Where they would then implement something new, but it would just be another tax business? I just, I'm thinking about, you know, as these, the money's coming in and the people are like, oh, you know, government's like, we need more money for that again. And I think that's where, I don't know. I'm, I'm concerned about that kind of thing.
I mean, it's a risk, but it's minority report. I mean, we can't, we can't not do something because of what someone else might do years from now. Jerry, I don't, I, you might know more on that.
Jerry, did you have something?
Oh, I was just going to say, yeah, a future council could lower the exemption. It, it doesn't need, you know, it, there's nothing requiring it to stay at a million dollars. It could be lowered to zero. It could be raised to 5 million, right?
But the tax itself cannot be changed, not the exemption of the tax. That's the max allowed.
Right. Well, even if we were to do two tenths of a percent, right? If, if we were to do two tenths of a percent, so you are telling me there is indeed a possibility where they could lower the threshold and, and really even remove it? So that all businesses would have to pay the tax in the future? That's, that's where the concern is. Like it's the long-term trajectory, not against this, but it's.
But they could also take this vote and do it anyway then. And we would have lost out on 10 years of bonding for parks.
They take the money away from that, but someplace else that's there.
Future council can say, the parking goes away and we're using it on new vehicles only.
Yeah. Councilmember Swat.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, the kind of reception thing is what is most difficult for me because clearly not going to hit all the businesses very much at all. So, you know, as, as much as I talk to them, they're just like, they oppose to the, the new government thing that has to be laid on top of them. And oddly enough, I don't know exactly which businesses we're looking. I was kind of cringing when some other passionate, passionate council members, but I like had the unfortunate knowledge that there are many, not, not like a few, but a many, like dozens and dozens and dozens of businesses, home-based businesses in the city of Bonny, like making multimillion dollar year sales as opposed to necessarily what they're taking in. Because that's one thing with the BNO tax is that it's off of the gross revenue, which really angers a lot of people because some peoples that are, you know, in the material sales or whatever they're doing, you're either selling goods or services. So if you're selling goods and you're buying, you know, millions of dollars for the goods a year, selling millions of dollars has nothing to do with what you're actually making. As opposed to somebody that could be supplying services, a million dollars a year and they're making a lot of money. So it's really a non-equitable type of a tax that really, you know, rubs a lot of people the wrong way because it just is very different for very different types of businesses. I would love to, I think the solution is technically exactly correct. I think it's exactly what the city needs, the funded parks program. If we could like dial it in on that, it'd be really great in my mind. If people were like looking at the parks plan package that came back and said, yeah, we want that park. Here's what it's going to cost. Here's what our revenue stream is. Let's go do that. Because, you know, I'm ready to say yes to that kind of a scenario. But it's not, it wasn't in my campaign stuff. I didn't go out there, it wasn't even in my campaign, you know? Water rates is 100% there that we need to be dialed in on. We need, that's in my campaign stuff. So, you know, I have to try to kind of stick true to what the people voted for me for. You know, I'd be more than happy to put that on a campaign and say, hey, you know, if you want, this is the funding opportunity to do that, you know, how do we do that? Can we get some buy-in on that? And I'm, I love the solution, but I'm not ready to say yes, but I guess.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, so it's, you know, you mentioned the people that we represent. And I, I literally just came off of a campaign. So the concerns that people were talking to me about was property rights, personal liberties, personal choice. And of course, water rates. And I ran on helping small businesses as well. And I just, I don't see how this is going to help small businesses. It's not going to want them to stay. We've already lost, just in the last two months, we've lost like three businesses in Bonny Lake and we're losing them to Buckley. So I'd actually like to go have a conversation with the businesses as well as Buckley and find out, you know, what are they offering that's making them more friendly than Bonny Lake? So I, I just, I see businesses packing up and just saying, well, that's just one more nail in the coffin for Bonny Lake. You know?
These businesses were over the million dollar threshold?
No, they were not. And, but what motivation do I have if I know that, you know, as, if I'm a business owner, that if I pass that certain threshold, then all of a sudden I'm going to have to pay more taxes, which is going to put me back down into another tax bracket that I just came from? Because, because, you know, so what motivation do I have to be prosperous if I know that that's just going to cause me to be taxed? I mean, I know right now for me at work, I'm on a cusp where if I work too much, then my taxes put me into another tax bracket and I bring home less money than I would have last month. So I actually have to be really careful how many hours I work or I have to work overtime in order to make up for that extra tax bracket. And I just see that happening to small businesses where, you know, that little percentage can really change their profitability. Plus it's going to change morale. It's going to, you know, just cause problems. And, and to me, when I, when I did campaign with the people, I didn't hear one person say, hey, I want you to raise taxes on businesses. That's a great idea. And, you know, let's pay for parks by making the businesses pay for it. I think that's awesome. I don't remember one person actually saying that to me. So I'm still a no. I'm having a very difficult time with this, but not really.
I'd like to table this in another motion. There are a lot of questions coming up here. We can change the threshold as more equitable for more people in this. Or maybe it just larger this is only, only enough to hold this. I'd like to make a motion to table this to a workshop.
We're in second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Table. Which brings up the question of the next.
I make a motion to table the next item on the agenda.
Okay. Second. Again, discussion. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Table. Uh, brings up the, I have three moves. Do you want, or, 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 or?
Who said the nays, please?
The nays? The blonde and the red. And he always says, you got one there. Did you get it? So in one, nails and a little hole, I'm sorry, Swatman. So I think that brings up C, so this is AB 2241. First, would you please read the title?
This is ordinance D 2241. The council motion was 08020 of the Bonny Lake ordinance filed. And the corresponding portion of ordinance is related to self-storage facilities.
Tell them. Question? Councilmember Collins.
This is a property rights issue, so it's a hot button topic with me. My community development, we discussed this many, at many meetings. We challenged the staff to go the extra mile to determine and to notify the community that this would be an impact on their rights. The staff willingly did that and we got responses back. And I appreciate their hard work. I think the city can move forward with this and know that we've really worked hard to notify everybody affected and we waited long enough for their response. So as much as I, zoning is one of the most, this is my personal opinion, one of the most diabolical ways to steal people's property. And, but it is one of the most effective tools for a city to manage growth. So that, that is a challenge. I, I promise that I would like measure things by, is it a burden or a service? I think the city went beyond what was necessary or expected and did a service to the people to try to make sure this wasn't a burden. So I really appreciate that.
For the discussion, Councilmember Holden.
Um, I wanted to see about moving to add an amendment. I wanted to see about moving to add an amendment to this, to include religious and recreational designations. The reason being is because I know that we've been looking for ways to, you know, add money to the city's bottom line, if you will. But I really feel like we can't underestimate what these two uses have on a community. And so, you know, I'm looking at, just from my own experience from, you know, being, I grew up in a Buddhist church, and we always did all kinds of things, you know, outside of the community, very much involved, part of parades even and things like that. And then, you know, in my adult years, at the Christian church that I go to now, you know, there's so many things going on with children's activities, and even just the ability to be able to have recreational businesses come in, and I know that's not, you know, a huge moneymaker, but I do, I am asking the council that we move to add and include those two designations.
So, an amendment to this one, or would you rather, or would it be a better, I don't know, legal would give us, as far as having to come through CDC as a separate one to help the businesses?
Jason, please.
May I propose a slight kind of compromise position?
Sure.
The two zones that are affected by this ordinance already allow for those uses. So that, when we did the East Town zoning change last year, that was a compromise that was done, was all those uses were added into East Town when they had not been there before, and they already are allowed. So what I.
East Town?
Yeah. So the, so the two zones, I guess the two zones that are primarily affected from this zone, this change, are already allowed to use. What I recommend is, we do have the 2022 Development Code Maintenance Package coming forward in the next couple of months, and that we add it to that, and I can get with Councilmember Baldwin to understand exactly what change needs to be made, and move it forward in that way, and that way the council would vote on it this year when that package comes.
Councilmember Clones?
Yeah, so this is like really a nice bookend for the previous discussion, right? So the previous discussion is like, how do we serve citizens? So, and parks are a nice way to serve citizens, and what's the value of the park? The value of the park is to provide some relief for people from their schedule and provide some place to recreate. While people recreate at churches and at recreational facilities, I think recreate is the first part of recreation. So, and it doesn't cost the city any more, right? So these are ways, making sure that we encourage these facilities and places in the city, is a way that we can, with almost no cost, provide some of the value that we're again providing at a very burdensome cost in parts, right? So I would, I would appreciate a motion like this for that reason, because it seems to me like it does try to answer the mail for, you know, how do we serve the citizens' welfare? When these places, you know, by enabling people to go in these places.
So just to be clear, Chris, as Jason had said earlier, would be vote on this tonight, and then there would be part of the transit plan, basically.
No, they were the Development Code, and the other challenge is it's outside the topic on the ordinance. If you, if you look at the top of the ordinance, it's in ordinance of the city of Bonny Lake, blah, 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 related to self-storage facilities. And so this is kind of unrelated to the topic of the ordinance. If we would have wrote the topic broader, maybe, but I'm just saying with what we have.
It's too specific.
Yeah, what we have gone through from planning commission, all the public outreach that we did, as Councilmember Clones noted, it would be kind of beyond the, I'm not saying this, I don't know about the legality, but at least the spirit of what we did.
Yeah.
So I understand the concern, and I think, to get to it, I think the best thing would be for you and I to sit down and identify which zones you have concerns with, which uses you have concern with, and when we bring that maintenance package forward, we just have that in there, and I'm committed to do that, and then the council could vote on it. And if it's not in the package, that package is broad enough that something like that could be out of it.
Councilmember Clones?
What, what zones in the city don't allow it?
Well, that's what I was looking, I was kind of trying to look for real quick.
The Midtown, the Midtown Core, right?
It, I believe, I believe it's Midtown Core.
Did, what was it, like 97.2% of all of city limits allow it?
Yeah, I think there's a small portion of, I'm quickly looking through my zoning code while you ask me.
That's less than 3%, I believe, of the city limits that don't allow that.
Yeah, it's a very small area, because all R1, R2, or religious facilities, trying to figure out exactly where we put those. All right, just give me one second.
Well, it's in the visible areas of the city.
No, it's literally just down, just down 410, just.
The main corridor, yeah.
I believe it's just on the 410 corridor. I believe it is the only zone that does not allow for religious philanthropic and civic organizations. All other zones allow it.
What, where does that start then?
That would be from about 192nd to 214th.
Target to Safeway?
Yeah. All other zones on, so anywhere from the target to 24, basically the edge of the city on 410, and then from 214th all the way out to 233rd. So, and then anyone R1, R5, any of the other zones. So it is, I think that's what Councilmember Evans was referring to, it's about less than 3% of the city's geographical area.
That's like all the traffic areas, so, like, not where the old Albertson's was, you can't have it there, because you can see it from the 410, not across where they have like the, hit the little strip mall there.
Well, and that's why I said.
Same parking lot as Albert used to be, what Coles is now.
That's why I was saying that maybe this topic should, you know, we can talk about whether or not it should be added into the Midtown Core as part of that development amendment package, and then the council can make that vote at that time.
Because this particular bill that we're looking at, or that we're looking at voting on, is to not allow for new storage facilities, but any storage facilities that are existing can rebuild if something happens, they have, they can maintain their buildings. So this is basically just a restriction on new incoming storage units, correct?
Correct. What it did, as Councilmember Clones kind of, kind of guided this legislation through the CDC, we did 241, we, anybody that has basically submitted building permits and is in the process of developing what now, is able to continue that process. And then Councilmember Baldwin had a question at one of, one of the council meetings, we discussed this, about existing facilities, and so we added provisions in there that not only could they rebuild if they burned down, but if they decided, well, I'm not being able to compete with new building A, can I just demolish my building and do a whole new one, it's three stories, that is also allowed. So it really does protect those businesses and their ability to compete with the newer buildings that are coming.
That's great, yeah.
Any other discussion? Do a vote, are all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Last thing is a discussion on budget scheduling. This came up because there are so many items coming forward, and they, I believe they're working on maybe cutting some of those out, but currently, we're looking at like over two and a half hours per meeting leading up to their end of the year, just for staff time, that's without discussion amongst ourselves. And so it's been brought up that we could, on October 11th, I talked to, I can also remember Evans, the Public Safety meeting and the Finance meeting, basically having a long, special meeting at that time, it would be like, you know, 3:30 to whenever we get done, and get through as many of parties as possible. So I just want to make sure that we threw that out there for everyone, so you can make arrangements if you need to, or if anybody has any issues with that.
This was on like a committee of the whole.
It would be, yes.
So it wouldn't be Public Safety, it would be, in lieu of when Public Safety would start.
Oh, I see.
Go through Finance.
Okay, correct. So we wouldn't do Public Safety.
Correct, yeah.
Does it start on October 11?
October 11. Here we go. Jerry, you're pretty dirty, dirty.
It shows I'm not on mute. Am I still on mute?
No, you're good.
We can hear you.
Thank you. I will have more information after September 10th, when the mayor, John, and I meet.
Well, we'll keep it in flux. That's the idea currently, to make it, make sure we can get through some of these.
Can you reiterate that, sorry?
Yeah.
Catch all of it? From October 11?
So currently, we'd be looking at October 11th, which is a Tuesday, it's a normal council meeting, normal Public Safety and Finance meeting. We would combine all of those, basically, to have a committee of the whole to sit down and go through as many of the decision cards in the budget as we possibly can, because we're just going to run out of time.
Okay, so we would just meet in here, or are we going to meet upstairs?
Yes, down here.
Okay, so just like a regular council meeting, but a special meeting?
Correct. Special workshop. Yeah.
Okay.
No other questions, then I think we made through everything, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.